It is my pleasure to call to order the Thursday, May 13th, 2021, meeting of the Abington Township Board of Commissioners. And let us start, please, with the roll call.
Commissioners Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Brodsky.
I'm here. Thanks for asking.
Commissioner Ball.
Here.
Commissioner Carswell.
Yeah.
Commissioner Rothman.
Here.
Commissioner Vaughn.
Here.
Commissioner Myers.
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Bowman.
Here.
Commissioner Di Placido. Commissioner Reingrab.
Here.
Commissioner Veighi.
Here.
Commissioner Schreiber.
Here.
Commissioner Hecker.
Here.
Commissioner Spiegelman.
Here. Let's, those who are able, please rise and let's all join together in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Camera back on? Okay. All right, there's one brief announcement that earlier tonight at 6 o'clock PM on Thursday, May 13th, 2021, an executive session was held to discuss legal matters. See, we do not have, I don't have any other announcements and we don't have any presentations. So let us move along to public comments on agenda items. And I have to, this always takes me a little, little while to do on my iPad, so please, let's see. Full attendee list, okay. All right, if anyone who wishes to speak could please raise their hands. All right, I see we have a, we have a hand raised. Please let in Ms. Lehman.
Ms. Lehman, you're unmuted.
Okay, so I would like to start out by saying the consent agenda is completely illegal. We have the township manager deciding that certain things will be taken off the regular agenda. There's no consent. One time, Commissioner Spiegelman tried to make consent. That was contrary to what was advertised by law and, and no amendment to the motion was made. And so I would like you immediately to take off the backyard farms off that agenda. None of the documents were provided at the last meeting. And I would like to have a discussion of that issue where we are made aware exactly of what is happening in that because we've not been provided the documents, I asked for them before this meeting and again was refused the documents. So that's number one, okay? And, and the backyard farms, stunningly, you have agreed, you know, not to pursue against the, the variants. This is contrary to our laws and you took an oath to uphold our laws. You should be there actually upholding our laws at, at any zoning meeting as well. So please take that off the consent agenda and please discuss it normally in the normal course of things, okay? I also, the, the new township building, none of that has been done in public. That has been done all behind the scenes. It was approved in a 400-page budget where we got three or four minutes to speak. Almost a 500-page budget. It's not appropriate. And none of the discussions of why a township building is being, why the determination is, is being asked for has been presented to the public, including none of the information about the building that's going on inside the township building. And, and how that fits in with, you know, construction going on now with a building that you're intending to replace. So the public needs to know this. It's the expenditure of our funds and we have a right to know that information, okay? Again, you took an oath to obey our laws. Please do so. The, the block grant funds, I am stunned that 300,000 is going to a church that in the short time they've been in this township has garnered nearly a half a million dollars from township and grant money. This is money that poor people are taxed for and it's being given to a wealthy church. This is backwards. This is the opposite of what we should be doing in this township. I am greatly opposed to that and I would like to see that part turned down and those monies sent to good uses for low to moderate income people, okay? And, uh, okay, and I have asked, you would please let us know in advance when we still have time to finish our sentences before you cut us off.
Ms. Lehman, your, your, your time has expired. Thank you for, for your comment. All right, the next comment is from Mike Z. If you could please unmute Mike Z.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm actually just attending the meeting tonight just based on what they call a backyard farm. I don't even see it really as a backyard farm. Not big enough to be a farm.
Commissioner Spiegelman, could the speaker identify himself? He's only listed as Mike Z. We don't have a, a name or an address.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. If you, if you could please give your name and address. Sorry about that.
All right, Mike Zoto, 1718 Melmar Road.
Thank you.
So we reside across the street from this so-called farm. Never noticed it in 15 years of living here till it was brought up that they were growing vegetables in the backyard. Doesn't seem to be a threat to anybody. Doesn't seem to be, you know, anything that really should worry anybody. You know, farming is one thing, but just, you know, having vegetable gardens in the backyard that's not, you know, a farm-sized 10, 20 acres is only a, you know, one-fourth of an acre at most. I mean, everybody has community gardens these days. They have plots they're giving to people for gardening. It really, you know, I really think it's an issue that doesn't even need to be on any agenda. It's really a moot point. Because they get, they gave up the rights to selling the produce and/or other farm items in their driveway. So that retail business is defunct and this whole issue shouldn't even really be challenged or, or, you know, fought against. That's all I have to say about it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zoto. And now, if you could, if you could please let in Keith and Aaron Hammond. Could please unmute them. Mr. and Mrs. Hammond, can you, can you hear us?
It's just Mr. Hammond tonight. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
No, thank you. I just wanted to come on and, and, you know, voice my opposition to this entire agreement between the township and the, and the farm. With all due respect to Mr. Zoto, I don't know if he was aware of all the antics that went on last year and all the, all the other, you know, kind of shenanigans that this farm has been up to, you know, trying to challenge the township's ordinances and all the other, you know, history there. You know, Mr. Zoto, if you'd like to come speak to me, apparently I live right across the street from you at 341 Van Rooden Circle. So please come knock on my door anytime and we can talk about it. But I am, I am adamantly opposed to this agreement because just based on the history. You know, the farmer down the street, you know, you mentioned yourself, he, he opened up a retail market. He violated all types of zoning laws with complete disregard for his neighbors, no communication to anyone, no permission asked, no, just nothing. Just, you know, cars speeding around the neighborhood and he just said, oh, well, you know, I got, I have a business to run. And, and that's the problem, that this isn't a business area. This is a residential area. And I, I'd just like to pose a question to all the commissioners. I don't know, I mean, I sent an email to all of you yesterday evening regarding this, but you know, what, who on this board, who on this board of commissioners would want a commercial entity leasing, you know, the, the backyard or any property of one of your neighbors to run a business? Like, I, I mean, I have to imagine that none of you would be interested in having that happen. And I, I just can't see anything that, any good that comes out of this agreement or him moving forward with this variance that may, I mean, we, we really don't know all the legalities that are involved in this. He may eventually, you know, try to open up his farm again or open up the farmer's market. I mean, it just, you just don't know. If you, you know, he seems to be the type of person or that, you know, that, that you give him an inch and they take a mile, right? He, there was other, there was other, you know, permits he had in place that he violated during that as well. He just didn't care. He just, it's, you know, he just had no regard for anyone in the neighborhood. And, you know, our ward commissioner has done nothing to support, you know, done nothing to help the overall, you know, feeling of the neighborhood, which has been in opposition to this from the beginning. So it's just been a very frustrating time that we have to constantly keep coming on and voicing our opinion and sharing with all of you that we would like this farm just to just be gone. We don't want to deal with this anymore because he's shown complete lack of respect for his neighbors, the law, and everything else since the beginning. So, you know, I'd just like you to think about that, all of you commissioners, and think about, you know, having someone lease their property in your neighborhood for a commercial entity when that, that's not really what it's intended for. So, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for sharing your comments, Mr. Hammond. And now, if you could please let Pastor Mitchell in.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I, I'd like to commend this board and you for the leadership of recognizing the serious need for seniors. It was in very stark relief during this COVID crisis. And we have endeavored, as long as we've been here in the township, it's been two years now that we promised you we would be good corporate citizens and that we would build things beyond just the needs of this church. And a senior center is direly and desperately needed. And that is really the reason why we purchased the Lutheran Church on Easton Road so that we could help to develop a real asset for this community. And we've done that. We've already spent 100-plus thousand dollars in the area of the senior center. We have been instrumental in supporting the food cupboard because seniors have challenges. It's not just a meeting place, but it's a place to provide services. And so Salem endeavors to continue to provide services to people on a non-sectarian, non-religious basis. It is a whosoever will come and get support. And I've committed to you and other members of this board and the people in the community that Salem would always be that kind of resident, corporate resident in this community. Many of the people who used our community center in Jenkintown actually lived over here in Roslyn, in Bulla Grove. And so this moves it a little bit closer to the people who need it. And already we've seen an outpouring of support in the community beyond our congregation. But people who recognize how valuable the senior center is to the rest of the community. So I, I speak on behalf of the 2,000 members of Salem Baptist Church, many of whom live in this community as well as many of the people who are just simply walkers around what was formerly the St. John of the Cross campus. And so I know the folks from Queen of Peace, former St. John of the Cross, and many members of this community who are not connected with churches or institutions of faith will find this community center on Easton Road, exactly what we need in the post-pandemic time as we try to support seniors from all walks of life. And thank you very much, sir.
Thank you so much, Pastor Mitchell. All right, okay, I believe that is it for comments on agenda items. So now, if I can reset my iPad here a little bit, we will move on to the consent agenda. And Ward 1 Commissioner and Board Vice President, Tom Hecker.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening as listed in the meeting materials, items A through M, and I so move.
Second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from commissioners? And please give me a second to thumb through the, my little thumbnails of people here. Shout out if you have a question or comment, fellow members of the board.
Can you show the second page?
Actually, it goes on to a third.
Yeah. When you're, when you're ready, Commissioner Bowman, we can roll to the third page.
Yeah, that's good.
All righty then. Okay. All right. Any questions, comments for commissioners? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes.
Thank you, President Spiegelman.
All right, now we're going to move on to unfinished business. There's unfinished business of the Finance Committee. So we turn to Finance Committee Chair, Ward 12 Commissioner Matt Vitti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Only item of unfinished business for the Finance Committee this evening is FC-03-051321. It's a motion to approve the 2020 to 2024 CDBG five-year consolidated plan in the fiscal year 2020 annual action plan and analysis impediments to fair housing choice. And I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from commissioners? But I'll call on you right away. Go ahead and shout out. All right, hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, that concludes the unfinished business for the Finance Committee.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Veighi. Now we're going to move on to new business. First, the General Board of Commissioners new business. So once again, we call on Ward 1 Commissioner and Board Vice President, Tom Hecker.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. The board has two matters of new business before it this evening. The first is BOC-01-051321. This is a motion to award the Abington Township Existing Conditions Assessment Proposal to KCBA Architects in the amount of $29,250 and to authorize the township manager to execute the contract, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I know Commissioner, Ward 6 Commissioner Mike Thompson wanted to, wanted to say a little something before we are on this matter. Before we discuss this matter, Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, President Spiegelman. Before we get started with tonight's discussion on this agenda item, I would like to announce that as an employee of KCBA Architects, I have a conflict of interest in this matter and I will be recusing myself from any discussion, voting, or any participation at any level in anything related to this agenda item moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner Thompson. All right, okay, so for, for background, Management Freddie, any, any comments to start us off?
Yes, sir. Thank you, President Spiegelman. As you know, originally in the fiscal year 2020 budget, we had originally proposed to do an overall and overarching architectural proposal, seeking proposals for a new township. We did not continue with that in fiscal year 2021. What you are seeing is not a proposal that will result in selecting an architect to design a new township building. What the request for proposals was, as was discussed in the budget process and is in front of you this evening, is for an existing condition. The RFP was public, the RFP was on the website. It has been advertised on our website. Proposals were solicited and sought. We ended up receiving five proposals. This existing conditions assessment is to do just that, to assess the condition of the building, to do a spatial analysis and to evaluate what the condition is, not only of the, of the township building, but across the street at the fire station. As you know, largest issue affecting the fire station oftentimes, that is the trucks get larger, they're having more and more of a difficult time getting into the building and the building just simply isn't meeting their needs. So we need to assess the existing conditions there. One of the other important pieces that we included in the RFP was to look at pedestrian pathways. We have a parking lot that's very active between the two. So we have people walking back and forth between oftentimes people cutting from Guernsey Road across Horace to the hospital. So we thought it was important to also take a look at pedestrian pathways and as it looks with the intersection of the vehicles. The proposals you saw, we received five. There were two proposals that did not provide certificate of insurance. They were excluded. There were proposals that did not address as thoroughly perhaps as we would like. So they were not moved forward to the interview phase. There were two firms that were interviewed at great length, candidly. One of them was KCBA, the others was Phillips and Donovan Architects. As you could see, the Phillips and Donovan price was at $60,000. When we met with them, I won't call it value engineering, but we, we went into great detail to find out where the disparity was. As you could see, there, there were two or three that were in the line of the 29, 28, 28,000. But the, the responses to the questions and where KCBA was most strong and it listed the, really the strengths of the proposal, I can read them to you. Structural engineers included. Proposal included an interior designer on the project team. Unlimited meetings and public engagement component to work proposed, including a public survey and public workshops. One of those others, and I'm not going to, you know, mention their name, but one of the other in the 28,000 range did not have that public component to it. There was a thorough response, clearly indicated an approach and a process. It wasn't just simply responding to, to the questions, but an approach and a process, candidly, a, a better presentation in terms of, of what we were looking for. And then the thorough response and explanation of activities associated with each scope of work. And only, it was the only proposal explicitly to call out site sided, refinding, site grading, drainage, and, and a library reconfiguration. So for all of those reasons, they were the, the selection to be recommended to you to move forward with the existing conditions assessment. I don't know if there's, if you have any questions whatsoever, I'm happy to, to answer them. But I think that, given the cost, given the depth of the RFP and the range from 28,000 to 146,000, we feel very confident that this was a responsive proposal and are recommending it.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Management Freddie.
I have a couple of questions.
Commissioners upon, was that you?
Yes, please. I have a few questions on this.
Go, I was about to ask for questions, so go right ahead, Commissioners.
First one being, this firm, printing so tiny, KCBA. We're all aware that a commissioner works for that firm. To me, this doesn't look right. It, I don't think it's appropriate at all, okay? It don't look right. It don't smell right. I don't, I don't like it, okay? Number two, I didn't know we took a vote on building a new township though. I must have been absent that, that night of that meeting, I guess. And number three, so the survey we're taking, is that going to be for all the firehouses? Because they're all purchasing equipment that's larger than what they already have. So that's going to be for even my Edge Hill and, and we're going to do a survey on all the buildings. Is that correct?
Commissioners upon, I'm going to actually field your first two questions. I'm going to hand the third one to Management Freddie. As, the reason I turned to Commissioner Thompson at the beginning is because Commissioner Thompson has, oh, has been 100% upfront and transparent that because of the conflict of interest, he is recusing himself. He has, he's done everything 100% correctly and, and by the book. And there's, there's absolutely no issue there, ethical or otherwise. Ethically, he scores an A+ in my book and it's a pretty big book. With regard to, we never actually voted on a new township. The whole issue pre-pandemic was, we had, we had an item in the budget to do an assessment of the township building to see, basically to see, is it viable to continue using this township building or does it make more sense for us to build new township building? Obviously, the circumstances of life and the world changed. And so the, the new scope became the, the exist, the existing conditions. What, what are the existing conditions of our, of, of our, of our, you know, of our township property? And, uh, what, you know, what do we, what do we need to do to make that viable moving forward? For your third question, I'm going to go ahead and turn to Management Freddie.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. And if it's okay with you, I'd like to address one and two also. Is that okay?
Well, at your discretion, sir.
One of the things I want to point out with respect to the request for proposals. One of the things that I include in many, if not all, of the proposals that, that we write is that there is a conflict of intersection which calls on the proposer or the responder to identify if there's any known conflict of interest. In the place of, in case of KCBA, they in fact did identify the conflict of interest. The, uh, second with respect to the new township building, Commissioner, there was never a vote for a new township building. We're not asking for a new township building. If this consultant is selected, it won't end up in allowing for a new township building. There would be at least two other steps that would have to occur for you to consider whether we would do that or not. And with respect to the fire companies, in the very beginning, when we first started talking about this, in order to be fair to all of the fire companies, we, the fire companies actually discussed this and they were made aware of what Abington Fire Company was looking at. And they, to my understanding and recollection, and I don't know if Mr. Jones is, is on the line this evening or not, but there were no other companies who objected as they are all going through various assessments of their facilities as part of their capital plan that we in part funded, I believe, two years ago. So I don't think there is concern by the other fire companies that Abington is getting something that they're not. And this certainly would result in an assessment, only an assessment of their facility, not necessarily the approval of any construction there beyond what's in their capital plan.
Thank you very much, Management Freddie.
Does Commissioners upon, has that adequately answered your question?
You answered the questions, but I don't agree with any of them. Sorry, I'm always looking out for the bottom line for my residents and the taxpayers of the township. I'm watching their money. That's it. So that's my comment.
I understand, sir. All right, do we have any other questions or comments from commissioners?
President Spiegelman?
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you. I'm, I just want to make sure that I'm very clear on this. Is this, is this the item that before the pandemic, I think probably 2019, that we budgeted $100,000 for? And this was to do a complete assessment of the building? Is this the same thing?
This is a pared back version of that. So.
Because I'm asking because the, the price is obviously pared back.
Right. We, we reduced it from a complete assessment and scope that would include allowing us to derive an architect to do a design for a building if we wanted to. That's no longer a part of this. This has been pared back to assessing the existing conditions, spatial analysis, which would give us some insight into what we may want to consider. For example, as anyone who has taken their tour when they first were elected, you know, when you, when you go through the police department, you see how woefully inadequate it is and, and the, the challenges that they have in delivering the tremendous services they deliver from there. This would assess those and make some, and take a spatial analysis of, of how they could better utilize this space to, to help them as well as every other point in the building. The other components will be to look at the, the HVAC systems as well as the air condition, meaning the quality of air. You know, we've talked about, we've talked about where do we go after we identify where there's mold, those kinds of things. That, that's what this is looking at and the fire company piece of it as well. As well as, we will also be doing an assessment of the HVAC equipment at the community center and the, the review at the library. So there are very different components. It's not just the township administration building.
And, and one, one other point, I, I understand that Commissioner Thompson has recused himself from this vote, which was absolutely the right thing to do. Will he be doing any of the work if this, if this motion goes through?
No, I actually heard Commissioner Thompson not only recuse himself from the vote, but from taking part in any activity related to this project.
Thank you.
Would not be involved in any aspect of it. And I don't want to speak for him, but that's what I heard him say.
Well, I apologize. I did not hear that. And thank you, Commissioner Thompson, for doing the right thing.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. And thank you, Management Freddie. Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Scrolling through, I don't see anybody shout if I missed you.
President Spiegelman, it's Commissioner Ball.
Commissioner Ball, thank you.
I just, I just wanted to, before we go to a vote, reiterate my support for this particular proposal. To make it very simple, there were three that were priced in the median price. Two of them did not provide adequate responses to the scope of work, thereby making them not viable proposals. There was a different. There was a different proposal that met all of the qualifications, but was double the price. It seems perfectly reasonable to go with the one that is half the price and also meets all the qualifications that were issued during the RFP. It's not priced unnaturally low. It's not priced unnaturally high. It hits right at the median. It checks all the boxes. Makes total sense to me. I think the story is perfectly clear. Unfortunately, there's a conflict of interest. We've taken care of it. It handled as far as I'm concerned. We'll keep monitoring it. But I think we're checking all the right boxes. It seems to be the right one to go with. Thank you.
Commissioner Bow, once again, I always like both your numerical analysis and your general assessment of things. Thank you. Your comment.
It smells beautifully. Thank you.
It's well coloned. Commissioner Bowman, you have your hand up.
My son has shown me the brighter button, so I will now be brighter.
All right. Excellent. Thanks, sir. Thanks for working out great today. All right, there are no other questions or comments from Commissioners again. Please shout out if I'm missing you. All right. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, Liz, you got that one opposed?
Yeah.
All right, motion carries.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. Second item of General Board new business this evening is.
Commissioner Hacker, I'm sorry to interrupt. Do we have to officially log Commissioner Thompson's extension?
It's noted in a minute. It'll be noted in minutes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes. So the second item of general business is BOC-04-05-1321. This is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 21-013, ratifying the Declaration of Disaster and State of Emergency from April 22, 2021, to May 13, 2021, and approving the declaration through May 2021, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments for Commissioners? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, President Spiegelman. That finishes the General Board new business for this evening.
Thank you very much, Vice President Hacker. Commissioner Rothman, are you on? Is your Zoom connection good now?
I'm all good. Can you hear me?
Can hear you loud and clear. So with that, for the Public Works Committee new business, I'm going to turn to Ward Recommissioner and Public Works Chair, Drew Roth.
Thanks for bearing with me, Commissioner Spiegelman and team. This is PW0, goodness gracious, my eyes are so bad, 03051321. It is a motion to adopt ordinance number 2181, accepting the dedication of Molly Court Roadway right of way, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I know this is one we've discussed many a time before. So I'm going to go right ahead and ask, is there any questions or comments from Commissioners? I haven't seen you. Please start yelling at me. Everyone else does. All right. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Spiegelman, that's all we have on the Public Works Committee agenda this evening.
Thank you kindly, Commissioner Rothman. Now for the new business of the Public Safety Committee, we turn to Ward 14 Commissioner and Public Safety Committee Chair, Lori Schreiber.
Thank you. We have two agenda items this evening. The first is PS01051321, which is a motion to approve the selection of Officer David Wiley's promotion to the rank of probationary sergeant effective May 14, 2021, and I so move.
Second.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from Commissioners? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Congratulations to probationary Sergeant Wiley. Back to you, Commissioner Schreiber.
Okay, and our second agenda item is PS03051321, motion to adopt ordinance 2182, amending Chapter 156, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Traffic Regulations, Section 14, Stop Intersections, and Article 3, Parking Regulations, Section 25, Parking Prohibited at All Times, No Parking Between Signs, No Parking Here at a Corner, Parking Prohibited Except Certain Hours, No Stopping or Standing, and Section 28, Special Purpose Parking Zones, To Add a Stop Intersection on Joyce Road at Osborne Avenue, Add No Parking Except for Sundays on the West Side of Fairview Avenue in front of 1673 Fairview, and remove handicap parking signs in front of 300 Tyson Avenue and 2317 Tag Avenue, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from Commissioners? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
And that concludes our agenda this evening.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Schreiber. Now for the new business of the Finance Committee, we go to Ward 12 Commissioner and Finance Committee Chair, Matt Vey.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll turn first to our Township Treasurer, Jay Blumenthal.
Thank you, Commissioner Vey. I'm going to start out this time this month with the amount of real estate taxes and fees transferred to the Finance Department for April 2021. We brought in $20,156, year-to-date $25,951,46, with a balance that collected $3,598,784. If you look at the increase over April of 2020, it was $3,885,602, which I think was pretty good. If you go then to my report about township revenues deposited in the Republic Bank, we have total this month for the month of April in the amount of $24,154,421, compared to last year of $18,208,451, which gave us an increase of $5,945,970, with a year-to-date increase of $4,145,683, which I think a big part of that is the fact that we were over April of April of 2020 on collection of the real estate taxes by the $3,008. And that is my report. I'll answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Blumenthal. Hearing no questions, we'll move on. Next item is FC-01051321, it's a motion to approve the March 2021 expenditures in the amount of $1,302,055.0 in salaries and wages, the amount of $1,915,945.32, and authorizing the proper officials to sign vouchers and payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of June 2021. Nice and move.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from Commissioners? Hearing none, let us proceed with the roll call.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brodsky?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Bow?
Yes.
Commissioner Carswell?
Yes.
Commissioner Rothman?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Yes.
Commissioner Myers?
Yes.
Commissioner Sapon?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowman?
Yes.
Commissioner De Placido? Commissioner Weingrad?
Yes.
Commissioner Vey?
Yes.
Commissioner Schreiber?
Yes.
Commissioner Hacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Spiegelman?
Yes. Motion carries.
Can we advance the agenda, please? Thank you. The final item on the Finance Committee's agenda tonight is FC-02-051321. It is a motion to approve amendments to the 2019 CDBG Action Plan, Amendments to the Citizen Participation Plan, and the CDBG-CV Action Plan Activities, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from Commissioners? Again, yell out if I don't call you right away. Okay. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
And that concludes the business of the Finance Committee for this evening.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Vey. That concludes our agenda. So now we'll turn to public comments on general matters. All right. And I see the first comment is from Joe. So if someone could please let Joe in, and Joe, if you could please state your name and address for the record, because we only see you as Joe.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Joseph Ely. My wife and I live on Tennis Avenue in North Hills. And we've been here about five years. For the last few months, I've experienced, we are experiencing a very annoying light trespass issue. And by that, I mean when I sit on the edge of the bed and look down the hall at four o'clock in the morning, it hits the beveled glass at the top of my living room door because it's directly in sight with that. I first made attempts to address this in all the recommended ways. It was just common sense to talk to my neighbor. My request was basically ignored, so I got in touch with the township and the community policing and zone enforcement, and our board commissioner, Mike Thompson, have all participated in trying to sway this neighbor to do what would have to be done if Abington had a lighting trespass ordinance. So right now, where it stands today at the moment is that I've discovered, I've learned so much about lighting issues and how to address these things. This is my first occasion to address anything in this way, in this fashion. And I'm really grateful for all you guys and ladies' help and service, first of all. And in addition to the police department, the zoning enforcement guy. So it was recommended to me to participate in this meeting and suggest the, whatever you call it, creation, adaptation, implementation of a lighting ordinance, which much like Drescher has, Cheltenham, Philadelphia, and many other townships. So, and one very important thing I've learned that maybe you all may not know is that you can't measure glare. You can measure light intensity, but glare is actually a sensation, which was news to me, news to us. So that's my, our issue. I don't know what steps to go forward to take to try to get ordinance in place. If it takes till winter, the light's even worse in the winter. There are no leaves on the trees and everything is covered with snow. So if it takes that long, that's fine. So that's all I have to input at the moment.
Thank you very much for sharing that, for sharing that input with us, Mr. Ely.
Yes, you're welcome. Thanks for hearing it.
All right, please let Ms. Lehman in and unmute her.
You're unmuted, Ms. Lehman.
Okay, thank you. So I just would like to say, the answer to that question is unbelievable. So first of all, Mr. Thompson should be helping Mr. Ely understand that he is the man who would put forth an ordinance, a suggestion of an ordinance, and request that the solicitor help them put it together, and that it would come before the board. And then when he used his speaking time to talk about it, Mr. Spiegelman, it would be up to you to say where he should go. But I worked for two years of my life to be able to have this speaking, maybe three years, just to be able to have this speaking session where we could address matters openly. Because before, all we could do was talk about agenda items. And now he is able to do that, but to not get an answer is absolutely not acceptable. The residents in this township don't want to not be answered. And you are creating policies against their interests and against their health, safety, and welfare. If this gentleman has to run around to 20 different people because the five people he just addressed won't answer him, that is affecting his health, safety, and welfare. So I want you immediately to restore the committee meetings where our open rights to address each chair are available. I want them restored. This is absolutely unconscionable for you not to have them and for you to have created the committee of the whole just to be able to jump over them. And we had stunning responses from Commissioners about the Willow Grove Mall. I had a long conversation with one Commissioner today that involved the fact that somehow this Commissioner does not understand that he's responsible to get the answers to the questions. After six meetings, he said he still doesn't, he still has questions about it and would like to see a financial analysis. It shouldn't have moved past the first meeting without you all saying, you may come to the second meeting with a financial analysis and be willing to answer all our questions. Instead, because the Commissioners have not asked those questions, the residents are left asking them again and again, using up their speaking time and not getting answers, just like Mr. Ely did here. It is absolute nonsense. And Commissioners have been telling them it's only one building. Mr. Spiegelman, you're one of those.
Ms. Lehman, you have 15 seconds left. You wanted a warning.
Yeah, I'll bet you would cut me off now.
You wanted a warning of when your time was running out.
So yeah, I finished this thought, and that is that Commissioners have been telling people that it raised their taxes, that there's only one building, that all of this, and it is not true. And so the opinions they get from the residents after hearing false information is false. If they heard the truth, then they would absolutely be able to have a different opinion about this. There is nothing in our interest about the Willow Grove Mall. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Lehman, your time has expired. Thank you for your comments.
Commissioner Spiegelman, can I jump in?
Commissioner Thompson, absolutely can.
I would just like to respond to the previous comments, sir. I've actually spent considerable amount of time with Mr. Ely, working through his issue with his neighbor, with community policing and with code enforcement. And I actually encouraged Mr. Ely to come out tonight and to speak and offer his support of a lighting trespass ordinance. That is something that we will be putting forth in the next month or two. And I didn't want that to go unanswered. We have been spending a considerable amount of time talking about this.
That doesn't surprise me at all, Commissioner Thompson, and thank you very much for attending to attending to your constituents' needs and concerns. Commissioner Bowman, I see your hand up.
Yeah, precisely my thoughts. I was very sympathetic to the gentleman's position. I think we do need such an ordinance, and it's a wise thing to do. No comment was solicited. I assume the matter would come back to us and we could all pipe in. So some speakers get very impatient for action immediately.
I will say this for myself. The reason I chose not to immediately address Commissioner Ely's comment is I figured that it was going to be handled. The Commissioner Thompson was on top of it. Moreover, we do have a very hefty agenda tonight, and I know it's very, you know, easy for us to all, anyone, but especially Commissioner Thompson, to get in touch with Mr. Ely offline. We do have several more callers, so I'm going to go ahead and move on. If you could please let Julie DeGratia in.
Hi. My name is Julie. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Julie DeGratia, and I live on 936 Maple Avenue. I just wanted to say, I wanted to thank the Abington Police Department for their prompt and supportive response to the traffic safety issues on Maple Avenue, specifically at the Artsley Park. Our entire community is well aware of the speeding, cars not stopping, slowing down, as many of you may have seen in our recent petition, asking the Commission Board to please provide funding for two stop signs and crosswalks at both entrances of the playground on Jefferson Ave. Currently, a car can drive three blocks legally without stopping directly past two playground entrances on Jefferson Ave, excuse me, picking up speed as they go. There are a lot of pedestrians crossing the streets to and from the Bird Sanctuary and the playground. The traffic pattern is unsafe, especially for young kids who don't understand it. There's too much confusion at these intersections. We need proper signage and crosswalks to make this a safer playground and a more pedestrian-friendly community. Other towns promote their walkability. I would like our community to do the same, all while making our playground safer. Thank you.
Many thanks for your comments, Mr. Grazia. And if we can now let Ms. Jennifer De Luca. Ms. De Luca, could you, could you hear us? You can go ahead and unmute yourself. Ms. De Luca, can you, can you hear us?
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you, President Spiegelman. I live at 937 Maple Avenue. First, I'd like to take this opportunity to also thank the Abington Police Department and multiple other Ward Commissioners who reached out to me with thoughtful reflection and narratives on changes that can be made immediately to take the safety of our children in the Ardsley section of Abington to heart. I'm pleased that our petition was received and signed by so many who live in Ardsley or care about people that live in Ardsley. If you read through the comments on the petition, this has been a decades-old concern as speeding has historically been an issue on Maple Avenue. I'm a 17-year resident. I've seen this problem with no changes being made. After speaking recently with Deputy Chief Porter and learning we're not even in ADA compliance to put in crosswalks yet is not okay. Safe crosswalks, as Ms. De Grazia mentioned, more stop signs should have been addressed many years ago. And thankfully, action is now being made on these issues. Thanks again to the Abington Police Department and again, the other Ward Commissioners that have contacted me. I'm so glad that we have the new pedestrian and vehicular safety team. And I would just implore our Ward Nine Commissioner Sapon to become involved in this progressive task force and begin to think outside the box of changes that are long overdue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. De Luca.
Commissioner Spiegelman, let me say something, please.
Yes, Commissioner Sapon, go right ahead.
As a resident of this township in Ardsley for 35 years, a Commissioner for 21, okay? I have six grandchildren, okay? So my highest priority is to children. It always has been, okay? Now, there was an incident that happened there, and if Deputy Chief wants to go in, well, fine, okay? Where a child about a month or so was struck by a car, ran out in between two parked cars. Okay? The following day, working with the Police Department, okay? We had the, the children of play signs put up. Then we started progressing towards, we're going to be putting a stop sign up at Jefferson and Maple. We're going to have two slow signs, but one to Jefferson and one down at the Meyer and Maple Avenue. So I've been working on this for the past couple of months with our Police Department, and things are moving and happening down there. I've been dealing with the grandparents of the child directly. Everything is being taken care of, and we're moving forward with different items. I spoke to the Deputy Chief today, filled me in, asked me my opinion on different things, and I told him, I'm going with whatever you guys are advising, go with it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Sapon. Um, our next comment is going to be from Lee. If you could let Lee in. And Lee, when you're, when you're in, if you could please state your name and address, because we only see you as Lee.
Can you hear me?
Can, we can definitely hear you go right.
Hello? Okay, yes, this is Joseph Applegate, and I live at Elm Avenue. And I just had two things I wanted to comment on. The one thing was, what I heard, Mr. Zampone, said Commissioner Zampone, and I have to concur with him about Mike Thompson, and even though he recused himself, and, and Mike's a great guy. I've worked with Mike in the past, but I don't think any of you commissioners, not one, should have any kind of business at all with the township. It is an absolute conflict of interest, and when one does it, another can do it, and it opens up a big can of worms. So any of you guys that, any of the businesses that you are in, you should not have any kind of business relations with the township, period. That's, that's my thoughts on that. And the other thing too was, Ms. Lehman spoke about earlier, and I'm not 100% sure I understand the whole ramifications of it, but there's a church that, maybe I'm wrong, somebody correct me if I am, that is getting township money, our tax dollars, for some kind of improvements. From my understanding, our constant, we have a separation of, of state and church, and all church money should come from donations from all the people that are members of a congregation. I wouldn't expect anybody to, any township or state to give the Catholic Church anything other than the donations that they get from their parishioners. So there are my two concerns that I have tonight.
Thank you very, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
All right, if we could please, all right, Commissioner Bowman, we're gonna, we want to move these things along, but Commissioner Bowman, I do see your hand up.
I think there was a time when somebody worked for a developer who did work in the township, and that person used to recuse himself, and nobody had a problem with it. So I guess it's different now.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Bowman. All right, let's move on, because again, we do have.
President Spiegelman?
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Myers, I, is that you, Commissioner Myers? Because I can't scroll the faces when I have the attendees up. I apologize. Is that you?
It is me.
Okay, go right.
And I think the gentleman that just spoke should hear some facts, because he obviously was under a wrong impression. The funding, the funding that the church will be getting is HUD money, and the money is to be used solely for a senior center in Roslyn, not just for the personers of the church, but for all seniors that are Abington residents. This is not money being given to the church to improve the church. This is to make a senior center.
That is absolutely correct, and thank you very much for, for pointing that out, Commissioner Myers. All right, if we could let the next, the next commenter in, it is Carrie. And Carrie, once you're in, if you could please state your name and address, because all we see is Carrie as your name. Can you hear us? Carrie, you can go ahead and, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, on a 529 Berkeley Avenue, and I'm hearing some of the community members talk about some life issues, including things like lights, traffic. I feel like every square inch that's available, and even places that are unavailable are being rezoned to include lots of development. And it frightens me that the development from the Planning Commission is based on very, very old data. I see studies from 2010, 2015. I see a slideshow that a junior high school student could put together, including a word scramble. And my fear is, you know, you can't do, you can't enforce lighting and traffic kinds of things. We live across from the Huntington Valley Mall. That's just nothing but lights all night and traffic all night. And I feel like I don't know if our community knows what's going on, and the walkable zones that we're talking about, I don't think anyone's resurfaced this since COVID. No one, the trains aren't doing well. Train, and people are having trouble with security and safety. To the point of the Neshamni Mall has shut down some of their train service and bus service. So I'm just imploring the commissioners to please consider not changing our community. Some of the things people are talking about, lighting and traffic, is only going to get 100 times worse. And I don't think our residents know it, and it frightens me for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing your comments.
Commissioner Spiegelman, can I just jump in on that one real quick?
Commissioner Thompson, yes.
Sure. Yeah, to the previous speaker, we are working on updating the township's comprehensive plan. And we are doing a lot of studies to, to bring us more up to date with the times. I do agree with you that a lot of our previous decisions were predicated on data that was, was old and out of date. And that's the point of doing the comprehensive plan, to get an overall view of the community using current data. So I would encourage you, in June, we will be having a, a public outreach session. It'll be online, it'll be virtual, and it will be dealing specifically with transportation issues throughout the township, and we will begin posting that on Facebook, probably in June as well. So please, if you have concerns about transportation, make sure you participate in that study, and we'll provide more information when it's closer to being posted. As for the light, I don't know that that's really covered in the comprehensive plan, but we will be talking about that over the next few months and try to mitigate some of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Thompson. All right, our next commenter is Katie Nagy. Please let Katie Nagy in. I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
You actually pronounced it beautifully, which most people do not do. So I am on Maple Avenue also. I'm at 95 Maple Avenue, and I have two young children. We frequent the Ardsley Playground very often. I'm, I'm very happy to hear and see that things have been put into place to deal with the situation that's going on. Just wanted to reiterate the need, as I am constantly seeing people running the stop sign that actually is there right at the playground on Maple Avenue. My children and I are there, my children are six and eight. We were almost hit a few weeks ago by someone who ran the stop sign. And then I, soon after that, heard about the little boy that was hit by the car. I know Commissioners Sapon mentioned that the child had darted out between two cars, but we were crossing at the stop sign, and the person ran the stop sign, which I see happen very, very often. So it's definitely not only a need for additional stop signs, but more enforcement of the drivers who are just driving crazy out there. I don't know what it is about that area. But it's, it's really out of control from what I have observed. It just, one other unrelated thing, but also in regards to the playground. I would love to see something happen with the crumbling blacktop that is over there. I guess it's an old basketball court. I'm not sure. I, you know, I, I believe I sent emails a couple of years ago when I first moved into the area in regards to something happening with that. Not only is it an eyesore, it's kind of a little bit of a dangerous area if kids were to run in there, you know, it's kind of crumbling. So I think that something probably very easy could, could be done to fix that. So those two things, it's a, you know, it's a wonderful playground. We love it. But these two issues are major safety hazards. Thank you.
Thank you very much for, for sharing your comment.
This is Commissioner Sapon again.
Go, go right. I, I figured, I figured you want to make a comment, Commissioner Sapon, go right ahead.
Just so everybody knows, our Police Department, and I got to give a lot of thanks to Al Free, okay, and Deputy Chief Porter. We have covered that stop sign at Jefferson and Maple for the past two weeks. Also, I had one of my residents on Maple Avenue to let the police use his driveway. So for the past few weeks, we've been monitoring that situation, monitoring the speeding, just been numerous surveys done over the years in that area, and it's well under control by our Police Department.
Thank you, Commissioners Sapon. And I, I think it's safe to say that Ms. Nagy's comments regarding the asphalt conditions have been noted already by township staff.
We were trying to raise money some years ago to put an inline hockey field up there, but we just couldn't get enough money to do it. So there's been ideas to put in there, but it takes money. It takes money. So, but yeah, there's been ideas to put stuff in there, even maybe another basketball court, inline hockey. We have a lot of ideas for that, but there's just no money. We tried raising money, but we, we didn't have enough money to do anything there. So thanks for the time.
Thank you, Commissioners Sapon. All right, I do see, I'm, I'm stuck in the same set of faces, but one of them is Commissioner Bowman. I do see your hand up. Go ahead, Commissioner Bowman.
Just a quick, I agree with Dennis, and that's why sometimes you got to raise taxes.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowman. And finally, we have Emery Silva. If, if Emery Silva could please be let in?
Hi, I'm Emery. I'm at 645 Monroe and Ardsley, PA, and I'm calling about the, I'm not calling, but I'm talking, concerned about the massage parlor up here that's, that's been going on for quite some time on Jakontown Road and Monroe Avenue regards to the prostitution and illegal people living in a, a building that's not an apartment building. And I'm, I've lived on this block 59 years. I was born on this block. And it's bringing in a lot of really low-life people in the area that are making it unsafe. My children are grown. My daughter doesn't even want to buy a house in this area because of that place and because of the other, the other one off the 19th hole. Tonight, there was, there was a, you know, it was closed down tonight, but this has been an ongoing issue that it gets closed down, and then they open it up and they close it down. And I just don't understand how this is allowed to go on in our community.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Silva. I think you'll probably want to stay on for the Committee of the Whole Meeting, because there is a new legislation that Commissioner Thompson's put forth for specifically for regulation of, of massage businesses like that. And that will allow for, for this issue to be addressed head-on and, and very aggressively. So I invite you to stay on for the Committee of the Whole Meeting. You probably want to hear that, probably be interested to hear that discussion.
I want to mention something about the, so that, that this isn't addressing, you can't address it here, like the weight that.
Well, just to the next meeting, I mean, literally the meeting right after this one, so.
I thought it started at seven. That's what I was told.
Yeah, well, no, we, we, we ran over, because we've had, we had a very large agenda, and obviously, a lot of folks called in, so that's why we're, that's why it's, we're, we're running late. It's gonna, right after this meeting, that one is gonna start.
I wanted to mention about the, also about what the person said about the playground and about needing to, like, like for this area, I, I agree too. Like, you, you would think that we would have a nicer playground. Years ago, it was, I forget what park it was over at Abington, and you could buy a, like a brick or a block, and that's how they raised money to make it nicer. So I think that maybe, and then you got to put your name on it. So maybe that's something that could be done as far as raising money to try to make it nicer, but I think this community, and as high as the taxes that I pay for living on Monroe Avenue, I think that there should be money allotted for that.
Well, thank, thank you again for sharing your comments, Ms. Silva.
Thank you.
All right. And we have the caller Summer9189. Could please let that, that resident, and if you could identify, if you could please share your name and address, because all we see is Summer9189. You can go ahead and unmute yourself. All right.
Okay.
Can you hear us?
I'm here.
Okay.
My name is Betty Carr. I live at 680 Hamill Avenue in Ardsley. I wanted to speak about the massage parlor, so I'm gonna wait and raise my hand again when that comes on the agenda.
Okay, great. So you just stay on for the, the meeting immediately following, and that.
I will. I will. I'll raise my hand again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. Okay. And I think this, that is all of the, all the folks who've called for the first time. I see Joe again, but we, we have, everyone has had a chance to speak once, and we really do need to move on to our Committee of the Whole Agenda. So with that, we are adjourned.